Christie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Looks like we're set to go. Are we live and on YouTube and all those things we need to do?
Yes, we are.
All right, with that, I will welcome everyone to the virtual meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. This is Wednesday, September 1st, start of the new month. It is 10:00 a.m. and as I said earlier, we are meeting virtually as will be the pattern at least for the near term. And we'll proceed now and call the meeting to order. We do have all three commissioners present. That is a quorum. And as is our tradition, our practice on the first meeting of each month, we like to recognize employees that have worked for the county for five years or anniversaries of five years. And also like to recognize new hire employees. So with that, I will recognize employees that have worked for the county for five years or more. Looks like we've got thirty, forty, fifty, sixty-five years of experience. And each of these employees will receive a hand-signed certificate recognizing their service to the county and our people. And also a lapel pin. And once again, those are hand manually signed certificates, no digital certificates involved there, and those will be forwarded to the employees. So starting with the five-year anniversaries, recognize Jennifer Mack from Health and Human Services. And we try to encourage people to attend. I don't know if any of these individuals are, but if they are, turn your camera on or say hello. We certainly appreciate your service. Next is Maria Waldrop out of the Clerk's Office. She's been with us for five years. Next, we have Penny Williams, also in the Clerk's Office, also for five years. And it looks like we've got a hat-trick out of the Clerk's Office. Jennifer Raver has also been with the county for five years. In the Sheriff's Office for five years, we have Daylin Shinholster. And also in the Sheriff's Office for ten years of service, we have Jenny Damaris. And then finally, with thirty years of service to the county, we have Scott Branchfield out of the Assessors Office. So again, our heartfelt thanks to you for your dedication and hard work and service to the county and our people. So again, our thanks. Next, we'll move on to new hire introductions. And Jaylene Cook, who is our Assistant Director of Human Services. Excuse me, Human Resources. Your turn, Jaylene. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hunt. We had another busy month this month, quite a few new hires. In the Planning and Development Department, we had Kelly Johnson, starting as a permit technician. Health and Human Services has quite a few folks. We have Michelle Lamore that came on as a case manager one. Katie Sawtell, Tia Latanzio, Alexia Rankin, Jordan Trippett, and Mixley Rodriguez came on as COVID response workers, part-time, non-benefited. We had Zoe Norman, I believe that's a typo there, who came on full-time as a COVID response worker. Health and Human Services also had Brittany Pendle join as a Certified Medical Assistant. The Deputy District Attorney's Office had Nolan Hill start as a Deputy District Attorney one. Brian Gardner came back on board with us as the Assistant Legal Counsel for the County Council Department. Caitlin Schneider came on board as an Animal Care Specialist in the Sheriff's Office. James Kiteley transitioned into a full-time role for us. He'd been on-call working in the Transit Department. Keith Barnes started in Veteran Services. He is the Veteran Service Officer. Karen Buchanan came on board as the Financial Clerk for the Public Works Department. The DA's Office also had Jody Maynard start as another Deputy District Attorney one. And finally, we had Susan Spease, who came on full-time with us as a Family Nurse Practitioner in Health and Human Services.
All right, thank you, Jaylene. I think last month I noted that we had every letter of the alphabet and A, double A, so that would be twenty-seven. So still many new employees, but a few less than last month. But also, many of those are, have been hired in response to the COVID pandemic. I'm also going to note Keith Barnes. He is the new manager of our Veteran Services and certainly want to welcome him in that role. And with that, if there are no comments from my fellow commissioners, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And I need to clear my screen. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. These are items of a routine nature or items that have come before the Board previously. At this time, if staff or commissioners wish to highlight an item, they may do so. Otherwise, I'll be happy to entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar as presented.
I move for adoption of the Consent Calendar as presented, Mr. Chair.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on. We've got a couple of decision items. And the first one would be the COVID Leave Vaccination Bonus Incentive. And I believe our Director of Human Resources, David Collier, is here to present that information.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, so last week you discussed this proposal. And you have that in front of you. And again, the leave is for eighty hours for all folks that are county employees, whether they've used leave in the past or not. It is, again, additional eighty hours just for COVID leave. And we are asking that you approve that. You also last week discussed a $500 incentive bonus for county employees, full-time, part-time, on-call employees to receive a $500 bonus if they provide proof of their vaccination records by the end of October. I will say that we've gotten already over, we've received over two hundred of those, so we are making progress on that. So we ask that you approve this today.
Questions or comments from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hall.
I'd like to offer up a few comments. I am, yeah, thank you. I am going to vote for this, but frankly, I have to say I'm voting for it with very mixed feelings, especially the vaccination bonus incentive. I have personally heard probably from about a dozen constituents who don't think it's a good idea. You look at our constituent input submitted for today's meeting, their additional negative comments. One of our local media outlets did an online poll asking people for their feelings about this. And the comments were very heavily, nearly unanimously against us doing it. Essentially, people are saying, why do we have to incentivize something that people should be doing anyway? And why aren't we doing all that we can to make sure that members of the public, who end up interacting with county staff, are protected from the virus? You know, in a few minutes, we're going to hear our weekly update, and we already know on COVID. And we already know the basic framework of that report, which is going to show we have just concluded by far the worst month of the pandemic, both in terms of total cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. And so to take this route rather than a more proactive route really does trouble me. And it's not just a case of voting for something that's not popular. I've never been afraid to take unpopular votes when I believed that they were the right thing to do. But, you know, as I said at the beginning, I'm just going to say I will support this, but I do it with mixed feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, I actually just have a follow-up question to what Commissioner Hall just said. You said that, you know, you kind of were, you know, had mixed feelings because you sort of maybe wanted to do something more proactive. Would that more proactive piece be a mandatory vaccine incentive? Is that kind of where you were going with that?
That's what I'm hearing from members of the public. They've noted that the Governor has mandated vaccines for all employees of the executive branch. Multnomah County has mandated vaccines for all of their employees. City of Portland has now followed suit there. And I know there's a lot of pushback over that, concerns that it can impact employee morale, concerns that it could lead to termination of good employees. And already, I know I've seen coverage that, you know, the employee unions are pushing back on these requirements. But what people are saying to me is essentially, if these jurisdictions can do it, why can't we?
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. I guess just to share my thoughts, I too got the various comments. I will say that some of the comments received as official public comment today, we're talking about that it shouldn't, should not be tied to employment as it's an experimental vaccine, et cetera, et cetera, which is not true. But anyway, so not all those comments were necessarily against the incentive, but rather not wanting to tie it to employment or kind of not actually understanding this. I also want to read it. This is coming from ARPA funding, which is taxpayer dollars. But it is not money coming away from county services or programs. It's essentially, you know, extra money we receive from the government to do these kinds of things. I would also add that of the few comments I received directly around, you know, why do these people get 500 bucks and I do not? We still have incentive money to try to incentivize the public to get vaccinated. And, you know, there's been questions on what the best incentive for the public would be. So if people think that, you know, more cash offered to the public to get vaccinated would be helpful, then I guess we still need to hear about that, you know, incentivizing the public is still something we have money to do too, to get vaccines, and we're always up to hear those ideas. I guess where I sit with this is I am supportive of it. I understand that people might be a little upset about it. However, we've also received a lot of internal positive comments from employees that have heard we are doing this and of course are supportive of that. I guess generally, I also want to say that while I get that other jurisdictions are doing mandatory vaccine things, it's one thing to say you're going to do that. It's another thing to actually implement. And at this point, there's been many of those jurisdictions, including universities, et cetera, that have said that. But we haven't gotten to the point where everyone is actually compliant. They're being fought by collective bargaining units. As you have said, I'm sure we all got the mass chain emails, you know, from units fighting back and trying to find support on that. So I'm actually not sure how successful implementation of that idea is going to be. A Board of Commissioners unit saying they're going to do it and it actually going through are two different things. Additionally, I would say that in general, I'd rather try the carrot than go right to the hammer. And so trying the carrot to me is the incentive bonus. I'd rather start there and see where we're at before automatically going right to the hammer. So I am supportive of it.
Hey, thank you. I'll share some comments. And let me say, I guess I see this a little differently. It's being called a vaccine bonus incentive. I think it's a reward for the truly extraordinary work that particularly our Health and Human Services employees are doing. But countywide, everybody is really burned out. They've been going 120% for 20 months or longer. All this is saying, as we would reward any employee that has gone above and beyond the duty, their normal job responsibilities for an extended period of time, we frequently provide those individuals a one-time bonus, a reward. So, well, this is seen by many as a vaccine incentive. I really see it differently as a way to say thank you to all of our employees, who frankly have been busting their behinds for over 20 months, trying to provide services to our county and our people. So from that standpoint, I'm quite comfortable with it. And I'm going to take a moment to address the mandate vaccines. I think Commissioner Jacobson raised some valid points, but let's have a little dialogue. Roughly, there's 600 employees in the county. The best guesstimate that we have is about 85% of our county employees are vaccinated. So we're talking about roughly ninety employees that we could mandate get a vaccine. How many do you think would really do it? I've had many people tell me, $500 wouldn't get me to get a vaccine. I've had people say I'd quit rather than get a vaccine. So, you know, let's say half of those people quit. The other half maybe drag their feet, maybe get a vaccine, who knows what. Now we've got 45 positions to try to fill at a time when there aren't people looking for work. Our Health and Human Services Department is begging for people to come to work. We can't find them. So to say that, gee, let's mandate the vaccine, everybody will get vaccinated and that'll take care of the problem. No, folks, it won't. It'll only make things worse, in my opinion. So again, I see this as an opportunity to say, thanks to our employees. I don't think that a mandate will get more people vaccinated. I think it'll only create a severe decline in the services we're already struggling to provide. So, well, it's a great idea, and a lot, not a lot, but some people have said they're going to do it. I haven't seen a lot that have done it, and I haven't seen any information or scientific data that says it's been successful in trying to accomplish what it says it's trying to do. So are there any other comments from Commissioners?
Well-stated, Commissioner Hunt. Well-stated.
So I will, it's been, I believe, I'll entertain a motion to approve this COVID Leave and Vaccination Bonus Program.
I will make a motion that we approve, excuse me, we approve the COVID-19 Leave and Vaccination Bonus Incentive.
And I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? If you're opposed, say nay. I heard three ayes. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the Clark Street Vacation. And I believe that's Director Kenyon.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Roy Kenyon, Lincoln County Public Works Director. And last Wednesday, August 25th, we held a public hearing regarding a petition that we had received to vacate a portion of Clark Loop, County Road 567, in, well, just on the outside of Toledo, just off of Business 20 Loop. We, I gave my report, presented the facts to the Board. We had a little input from the petitioner, not much. We didn't have anybody in opposition to this. The public hearing was closed. And then we forwarded it to this week for a decision. I would like to tell you that in the last week, I have received no additional information for or against on this petition to vacate. Therefore, unless we have some additional questions that I can answer for you, we're to a point of a decision on this petition to vacate.
Questions or comments from Commissioners?
No questions from me or comments. I felt like we went through this in depth last week.
Yeah, I agree. We covered it last week. I'm ready to vote in support of this.
I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion. Let's see, I'm looking for the words here. Actually, Casey, can you bring up?
I think the
There we go. To be able to read. I'll make a motion on the petition to vacate a portion of Clark Loop County Road number 567 in Lincoln County.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Director Kenyon. And you can share the good news with the Comstocks and others.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to reports. And the first report is a Small Business Development Center update from Dave Price, who is Vice President with our own Oregon Coast Community College. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's been a little while. I think I've spoken with you twice since the onset of the pandemic and back in March of 20. And I have a brief presentation to run through with you today. I invite you to interrupt at any time if you have any questions. I see you bringing that up. Would you like to do that or have me drive it, Christie, or whoever that is?
I believe you should be able to pull it up on your screen right now.
Okay.
Give it a shot.
All right, we'll do it. It says I have to stop your screen share, so I'll do that. Thank you for that opportunity. And let's see here, we should be off to the races.
Here we go. Good work.
All right, thanks, team. For anyone watching who's unfamiliar with the SBDC, just very briefly, we've been based at the Oregon Coast Community College since the college is founding, just about. Our main charge is to deliver free confidential one-on-one business advising to anybody in Lincoln County, whether or not they've started a business yet. And we do that with a pretty small team, but they're an amazing team, and they are from here on screen. Wendy Ludwig is a part-time advisor with us. Jesse Dolan is as well. Then there's me. Misty Lambrecht is an advisor with us who also runs our Small Business Management Program. And then Tanya Anderson helps keep everyone in line and handles all the administrative duties, as well as a lot of other hats she wears for the college. Very briefly, just a reminder, back in 2020, this is David Gombert, State Representative at a February 2020 event celebrating our independent accreditation as an independent college that had been 30-plus years in the making. We celebrated with a global pandemic about a month later. This was, I was on the beach, I guess, about a month after that, on the 23rd. I think this was the night that you and the cities of Lincoln County had settled on the lodging ban, the short-term rental closure, to sort of evaluate and protect what was happening with COVID. And it was an interesting time for business. And, oh, and by the way, we had also just announced our lineup of classes and mailed everyone in the county this shiny magazine. And by the time you opened it, we had canceled all the classes. And we moved them all online and we made them all free. But it was a, it was a period of adjustment for us, as it was for you and everyone watching. We certainly brought a lot onto Zoom and transitioned, as you have. We launched a Coronavirus Resources page that is still updated to this day, just activities. And this was our primary means of communication as news broke. Sometimes we were updating this page three, four, or five times a day as news broke about different grant opportunities, loans, and other, whether those were federal, state, or county, to help our businesses connect with the resources they needed to make it through. We held a lot of webinars, explaining things like the EIDL, the PPP, and other exciting acronyms. We did serve a record-shattering number of clients during that period, I'm calling that March 20 to 21. And then we did also create a Lincoln County Leadership Group on Zoom, just so that we had a place to touch base. We started this, actually, I think, on the 16th of March. And, yeah, it was. The slide tells me that. And this was an opportunity just to sort of reach out and see how things were all over the county, find out from business owners, find out from electeds, find out from folks from different agencies, what's the pulse out there? And that meeting has continued to this day. In fact, our next meeting is September 8th, a week from today. And I want to thank the Commission for allowing Commissioner Hunt to participate in that, most recently representing the Commission, and it's a valuable voice to have at that meeting. Very, very quickly, you have these slides, so I'm just going to skim over this. I just want to let you know that we believe that the metrics, the yardstick that we use to show you what we're doing, is critically important. I'd be happy to answer any questions about these. To say, we saw a lot of folks during the pandemic. A lot of folks who might not have otherwise come and sought out our assistance did so when they realized just the situation we were all in. And I think we were rediscovered and discovered for the first time by a number of different business owners. And I hope to continue to serve them moving forward in non-pandemic-related ways. We saw 313 clients. We spent about 1,000 hours with them, despite the fact that we roughly saw each client for about 20% less time than we typically see in a given year, just because we were out to answer questions and get them in and out the door, to be respectful of their time, and to make sure that we had the adequate resources and time to see all the businesses that were seeking assistance. And we had 90 different workshops that saw 1,247 different folks attend. Most of those were online, as you might imagine. We helped clients bring in north of $2 million in capital. And that's a fraction of the actual capital that our clients received. It's just a very difficult thing to reach out to someone who is just trying to get through the pandemic to say, hey, last week you spent some time talking with Dave, and I think you applied for an EIDL loan. Did you get that? Because we'd like to track it as a metric, and then we'd like you to sign a document that says, I wouldn't have gotten that loan if it weren't for the support of the SBDC. And that's a pretty hard bar to get to. And in normal times, I'm happy to burn down those to show people like you, Commissioners, our performance. But, by the way, I think my camera has just died. I apologize. Let me go to a different camera. And so that is that. We also talk a little bit about jobs. Notably, that our clients told us that they helped retain 90 different jobs right here in Lincoln County. That's 718% up from the year before, based on their work with us. Folks that maybe would have been laid off had it not been for some of the grants that it was our pleasure to be able to help connect them with. And that was something we're real proud of. Thus far, 2021 is off to a busy start. Our busiest time is always the fall. Among other things, that's when we school up our new class of Small Business Management. It also just happens to be on the heels of summer. And as you know, our businesses are out there dealing with a very, very busy summer with very, very trying circumstances when it comes to the depth of the labor market and all of that. So when things cool down just a bit, we'll see more business owners turning to the SBDC, and we see a spike in hours and the number of requests for service in the months ahead between now and the end of December. But you have these statistics. Again, I'm happy to field any questions for you. It's been, it continues to be a challenging time, and my hat is off to the whole team for the work they're doing. But it's not just been about surviving and about seeing clients and trying to connect them with the appropriate bucket of money. We've done a lot of other things since that time, since the pandemic has been We've done a lot of other things since that time, since the pandemic has been here. We didn't want to stay still. And so we've moved ahead with some new things, like we've launched a Property Managers Course, which is a licensure course that runs about eight weeks. We have our next one scheduled for the fall term. You may know that there's some consternation about short-term vacation rentals and other rental properties in Lincoln County. And we think one of the ways we can address that is to help provide more training and certification opportunities for people who do manage those properties, short and long-term rentals. And maybe the thing I'm most excited about is something you'll find on our website, oregoncoast.edu/sbdc, right now, and that is a brand-new childcare startups class. It's going to be just one month. It's going to have three in-person sessions at our Newport campus, followed by an independent study where the participants will go out and through Lynn Benton Community College, secure some child and infant CPR and first aid training. And the idea is with this class, we want to spool up new childcare businesses that are on a track for success, whether that's in-home or otherwise. If we were able to start just one in-home childcare business in Lincoln County, as you know, that could be up to 10 children cared for in that environment and thus up to 10 or even 20 employees who would be feel more comfortable re-entering the job market. And we think it's just one of the many pieces that we need to address to address the tight labor market for our business community. And we want to thank Jose Hernandez from Lynn Benton Community College, who's going to lead the session on licensure requirements and other elements for this class. Misty is going to be teaching some finance fundamentals and marketing. We're also going to have a session on insurance and legal considerations for these businesses. As you can imagine, there are a lot of those. But we're really excited about that. It kicks off on the 19th of October. Registration is free of charge, thanks to support from Northwest Oregon Works. Can't thank that team enough for their support of this program. And I'd like to see it fill the capacity and then we will repeat it as often as we can. We've also got other classes, legal classes in conjunction with the Lewis and Clark Law School Small Business Legal Clinic is coming to town this fall to deliver some human resources in a post-COVID world workshops. And what's great about when they come to town is if you, as a business, attend one of these workshops, you can also sign on to take advantage of one-on-one time with a lawyer or a law student, or sometimes one of each, for 25 bucks. And that's a pretty remarkable deal, as I think any of our local attorneys will tell you. Then there's our Small Business Management Program, headed up by Misty, who did create our Childcare Startup Series I was just talking about. Want to thank her for that. And that's supported by Lincoln City, by Northwest Oregon Works, and for more than a decade by you, the Commissioners of Lincoln County. You've funded this program through a $30,000 contribution for those years from your Economic Development Funds from Rotary. And I can't tell you how important I think that is. Our class has never been bigger than it was last year. I think we had 42 participants. And none of that would ever be possible with a part-time SBM instructor, much less having the bandwidth to start up childcare entrepreneurship series and other efforts. Just wanted to point out too that Wendy Ludwig, whose photo you saw at the very beginning, one of our advisors, is now representing the entire coast in the state's Capital Access Team. The Capital Access Team's been around for a long time, but we've never had a rep at Oregon Coast. And what it means is that Wendy will be able to work with clients and help connect them to lenders along the coast and beyond, as well as other investors, whether that's equity or other options. So we're very excited to get plugged into that source. So not only will she be assisting clients throughout the coast access these resources, but she's right here at home in Lincoln County and making that service more accessible to our local businesses. Finally, I just want to give a shout out to our friends at Centro de Ayuda. They have partnered with us at our request to apply for what's called a Community Navigator Grant. And I think we're about a week away. I thought maybe I'd be able to announce some good news today with you. But we have applied for our share of around $2 million that the state SBDC network applied for. About a quarter of that would come to Lincoln County, half of that being to the SBDC, the other half going to Centro de Ayuda. And what we intend to do is to connect Spanish-speaking businesses and other populations with business services like the SBDC in a way we've never been able to do before. I haven't been able to afford translation services and Spanish-speaking advisors and the kinds of things that we're looking at spooling out with this program. Couldn't be more excited. I don't think I could have pulled it off without Deborah Jones and the team at Centro de Ayuda. And so fingers crossed for good news there. We continue to work with Mark Farley and Rachel Matic Hughes and the team at Oregon Coast Community College and other partners across the coast, as the O2YH, or the Oregon Ocean Innovation Hub, which I know you've heard a lot about, continues to gel. And couldn't be more excited about the potential for that program. And later today, I just wanted to mention, I'm meeting with a couple of folks, including the Economic Development of Lincoln County, Paul Skydema, to talk about an ROI grant opportunity that we're looking at finding ways to deliver some more services directly to the restaurant industry, which is still dealing with challenges on many fronts, as you well know. This may not be the time. I didn't really ask Kristy Peter whether this was the time to make a request, but every time I'm before you, I'm always talking about the $30,000 that makes such a big difference to the SBDC. And just please know that I'm ready and willing to submit a formal request and write whatever you would like to see one for that support. I can't tell you how critical it is. And last, a little shout out to someone who's no longer with you, but Wayne Belmont was a joy to work with. At the end of last year, when you rolled out your close to $1 million in small business grants that you had, I think it was CARES Act funds that came to the county and you frontaled it right out to the business community. And I was thrilled to be able to spend an afternoon. This photo was taken, it's a self-portrait of my thumb, I guess, by, on Christmas Eve Eve. And we were stuffing checks into envelopes that had your name on them. And I just think that was the best thing. I saw so many small businesses. And knowing that these were going to be delivered on Christmas Eve or the day after Christmas made it even better. So thanks for your effort there. We were happy to play a small role in that. And I will stop sharing and I'd be happy to field any questions or comments or answer any other things I can.
Questions from my fellow Commissioners or comments?
Yeah, I do have a comment slash question. So I'm really, like, really, really happy to hear that you're working on some childcare certification classes. Like, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that. And just curious if you were working with Childcare Resource and Referral, CCRNR, on that? Because they also do childcare, you know, classes for providers. And it seems like efforts potentially are duplicative. So I just was curious if you had connected with them.
I will check. I believe that Jose Hernandez from Lynn Benton Community College's program that we're essentially stealing a chapter from.
That's, Lynn Benton Community College is the CCRNR program. So yes, you're connected.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Hall?
I really appreciated the presentation. Lots of good news. Not surprising that SBDCC is continuing to grow and build the foundation of our business community. I've always believed that, well, we're certainly lucky to have a few larger employers in the county that small businesses truly are the foundation of our economy. I'm certainly in favor of continuing our support for the program. I'm hoping that we had included this in our budget for this operational year. But let's see if we can get that moving through the process, if my fellow Commissioners agree, of course.
Well, I certainly agree. I think it's no secret that even prior to becoming a Commissioner as a community banker, I've been a long supporter of the Small Business Development Center, believe that it provides incredible support to small businesses. And, you know, it's widely recognized that small businesses are the the birth of job growth. And I think that continues to certainly be a valid factor, even in these days of the pandemic. So big believer in the Small Business Development Center. I have some additional comments, but I'll defer to Commissioner Jacobson if you have additional comments. I'm sorry, I can't read whether or not you wish to speak or not.
Well, you read my mind. I was thinking I had something I wanted to say. So, yeah, I guess the only, you know, additional thing I would say about the childcare piece, which again, I'm just really pleased to hear that you're partnering with Lynn Benton and CCRNR to do that work, is something that's been talked a lot about in the childcare community and with the Children's Development Network, which is a nonprofit in Lincoln County that tries to work on childcare-related issues, is the idea of a shared services model for childcare providers. It's something that other rural communities have worked on. There's different types of shared services models, but one in particular that seems to work, especially for small in-home providers, which is a model that really does work for our community, more so than large centers. So, you know, with small providers, a shared services model would be something like, maybe there's one unified person to do billing. So there's money that kind of comes into somewhere and you have one person that bills for all of those different facilities. So then the billing piece comes off the backs of the childcare providers themselves. They've also done things like a substitute poll. So you, as an in-home provider, if you need to take a couple hours off to go to the dentist or something, there is a trained substitute that can kind of come in and care for the children while you do that. I guess what I'm saying is I'd like for OCCC and the Small Business Development Center to maybe at least look at what that might look like. I'm not saying do it. I'm saying I think it would be nice to have some leadership to look at what that would look like in our community. And since you seem to be tip-toeing into helping getting childcare providers through, you know, trained through the Small Business Development Center, I think taking that next step and asking them what types of services could be shared that might help you stay in business, I think would be a good conversation for SBDC to start having.
Amen. And I absolutely will. And I'd be happy to report back what we find out about that, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I would just take a moment to kind of, I guess, mention some of the other areas that the county is involved with, that maybe more at the community college level. I know the President Riesling, Riesling, excuse me, was part of the Maritime Task Force, Governor's Maritime Task Force that I chaired and continues to be an integral part of the efforts of that task force in coordination, really with now Northwest Oregon Works, to continue to develop educational programs through the community colleges and also through the Workforce Investment Boards in the maritime sector. Certainly, the welding program at the Port of Toledo is an excellent example of those cooperative efforts. So really, I think it's, I think there's maybe a limited awareness of the broadness of the community colleges' activities in the county and the variety of programs that they offer. Certainly, the nursing program at this time is one that's also, I think, especially worthy of recognition. So lots of good things going on there. And certainly, the Small Business Development Center and your leadership, Dave, is really, I think, a critical part of that and much appreciated. And I'm pretty comfortable in saying that I think the county will continue our support as we start the budget process sometime early next year. So with that, thank you. Any last comments?
No, except maybe just one quick shout out to, we talked about Wendy's role with the Capital Access Team. I wanted to share too that she's been reaching out with her own time and her own effort to Home Share Oregon, to address another one of these legs of the stool that I think is going to help the labor market for small businesses throughout Lincoln County. And that is housing. And there's, you know, I know that the three of you have invested in housing for years and have done, in terms of sweat equity and a lot of work. This is just another tool in that toolkit to pair up folks in a trustworthy and supportive way with, you know, people who might rent a room or help cover a mortgage or rent. And I think there's potential in it. I think that it's, as an organization, it's, there's a lot that appeals to me. And I just want to thank Wendy for her continued work on finding out ways to maybe roll that out more robustly in Lincoln County.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. I may have appeared distracted for a moment or two there during Mr. Price's presentation. That's because I've been clued or advised by our county council that when we were acting on the orders involving the COVID leave and the vaccine bonus, we did act on the vaccine bonus, but we did not act on the COVID leave. They are separate orders. So I'm going to go back in the agenda and ask if there are any other comments on the COVID leave. And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that order also.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the order now before us temporarily amending the Lincoln County personnel rules pertaining to additional employee-paid COVID leave.
I will second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We cleared up that minor snafu on the part of the chair. And we'll move on and go back to our reports. And next would be Echo Mountain Fire Update. Public Information Director Ken, excuse me, Miller is on vacation. So Director Kenyon, Commissioner Jacobson, any updates?
Unmute myself there. Not a whole lot of updates, I think, from last week at this time. I don't know if Casey, he might have some updates as well. So kind of same issues we're still working on, still trying to work on, trying to find road money to fix the roads that are in need of repair there. I had a conversation with Kurt Schrader this morning about those issues, but no large updates that I know of.
All right. Well, certainly, maybe nothing specific, but not a forgotten issue or the issues are not forgotten by any means. So unless there's anything else, we'll move on to the COVID report.
Yeah, actually, I guess one more thing I should say, because we'll have a meeting, is we are coming up on the one-year anniversary of the Echo Mountain Fire. There was an event planned that needed to be canceled because of COVID, but I think it's just a time, you know, to just remember that that has been a year. And we still have a lot of people that are living in hotels and not able to be back home yet. And just reminded everybody in the community that a year may seem like a long time to many of us, but for those people that lost everything they had, it's not over. And this time of year is going to be challenging for them. So just an opportunity to remind everybody to remember that, you know, our community went through a lot a year ago and there's still people going through that right now.
Yes, it was Labor Day weekend, which is coming this weekend. Excellent point. Move on to the COVID vaccination update, but I don't see anyone from the Health and Human Services on the participation list.
I think Florence is here and trying to get in as a presenter. I see some stuff in the chat. Looks like Commissioner is kind of trying to help out there. So hopefully she'll be as a presenter.
She's shown as an attendee. We need to. She's shown as an attendee. We need to switch her over to a panelist. Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Kristi, are you working on that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it looks like it just happened. Okay. There's Florence. Welcome. Eric.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So thank you, Kristi, for putting the this slide deck on. You can scroll down, please. Thank you. So COVID numbers for the state of Oregon, you know, we're seeing I was thinking that maybe last week we were about to see some type of decrease. I think we might be seeing a slight slowdown, but this slide is definitely showing us that we are still climbing, unfortunately. So new cases on Monday, twenty four hundred fourteen, which is which is quite a lot. A lot of people in the hospital, over thousand one hundred forty-three deaths. So, you know, it's we're definitely still in the eye of the surge, if I may. Next slide, please. So this is the hospitalization data for the entire state of Oregon. It was last updated by the by the Oregon Health Authority yesterday morning. At that time, as mentioned above, we were way well over the one thousand one hundred folks in the hospital. And the, you know, there is no real sense of the curve starting to slow down or even decreasing. We're still climbing when it comes to COVID-19 hospitalization. Next slide, please. So one thousand one hundred sixty-two people hospitalized with COVID as of yesterday, seventy-three more than I reported last week. You know, twenty-eight percent were in the intensive care units. And as you can see, the availability of either adult ICU beds or non-ICU beds is pretty limited. Six and six percent for ICU bed and seven percent for non-ICU bed at the statewide level. You know, as you know, the majority of cases in the hospital are amongst people who are unvaccinated. And this graph really demonstrate that even for people who are considered a breakthrough case, you know, you can see that the level of death and hospitalization is very, very low. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the slide about the pediatric cases. And as discussed last week, you know, they they are increasing, like everything, you know, we are surging and this is the worst surge with experience to date. And therefore, it is logical that pediatric cases are on the increase as well. Next slide, please. So what's been going on in Lincoln County for hospitalization specifically? So the graph you're looking at covering the time period, early July to the end of August, those are figures reported by week. And you can see how really we picked in August with seven and then nine hospitalization at once in our hospitals. So out of the totality of the cases that have been reported to us during that timeframe, three point five percent were in the hospital. So that's a total of twenty-eight folks. Out of those twenty-eight people, twenty-three are unvaccinated. So this is very clear that the folks who went up in the hospital are people who haven't had either an opportunity or didn't make the choice to get vaccinated. What has been concerning, you know, is to look at the level of hospitalization in August compared to the level of hospitalization in July. We have three times as many hospitalization in August than we had last month and the previous months. And, you know, per the hospitals, they have, this is the highest they've seen at any time throughout the pandemic. Next slide, please. So I wanted to look also at who is in the hospital, like what are the ages? And unfortunately, you know, our older individuals are, you know, even if vaccinated, they're yet more still more susceptible to 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 get hospitalized. So as you can see, it's pretty much individuals from their forties to their eighties plus who have been hospitalized during that timeframe. Next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit more on our hospital and kind of like our capacity overall. North Lincoln Hospital has a total capacity for inpatient of sixteen beds. The adult ICU bed capacity is usually of four when they are staffed. And as of yesterday, they were having a shortage of ICU nurses and were not able to admit anyone in the ICU. And then at Pacific Coast Hospital, we have a little bit more capacity for total inpatient of twenty-five beds. The adult ICU bed kind of like varies between five and six, and they had five COVID positive patients in the hospital, I believe, yesterday. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is another way to look at what's been happening in our hospital. The graph really looks at Pacific Communities Hospital, just because they have been able to admit patients in the ICU over the past few days. And I just, I thought it would really interesting to show. So the red line at the top is their maximum ICU bed capacity. And then the orange bars are the the COVID positive patients. And this red dotted line is pretty much showing you the trend line, you know, hospitalization of COVID positive patients. And you can see, like, and this is from eight fourteen to the thirty-first of August, and you can see quite a trend upwards. So so that's that's concerning. At this time, you know, we were still able to hold our own. And if it keeps on going, we might not be able to for much longer. Next slide, please. So COVID cases in Lincoln County for the months of August. Remember the the time where I told you all, we think we're on track for four times more cases than what we saw in July, where we went way over that. And we are more than seven times more cases than what we saw in the month of July, which was already concerning in July. So we're at seven eighty-six. And those are the cases who have been reported to us, right? So this does not necessarily include folks who either haven't gone to be tested, or the people who have taken a home test and who have not reported their results to us. So it is likely that this is an under report of the total amount of cases we're having in the county. I mean, when you look at, so you see quite the increase in hospitalizations. We had unfortunately, I believe, three deaths in August related to COVID. In our, I mean, incidence rate is through the roof at six hundred and ninety new cases per hundred thousand. As a reminder, when we were in extreme risk, the threshold was two hundred new cases per hundred thousand. And at this time, our positivity rate was also not supposed to go over five percent. We're now at twenty-eight point three percent. When we were under executive order and under the risk framework, the extreme risk category, I mean, everything was pretty much not closed, but people, you know, we were really limited as to how much social gathering and activities we we could be doing. And this, those numbers really show, and this is definitely demonstrated by the amount of cases, how much transmission is going on in our in our community at this time. Next slide, please. Okay, so looking a little bit more, like focusing a little bit more on what August had in stock for us. So seven hundred eighty-six cases, twenty-three people in the hospital. You know, the past week only, we had two hundred and eighty-two cases reported to us, which was almost forty percent increase in cases from the week before. You know, breakthrough cases, as reported by the Oregon Health Authority, has been one hundred and fourteen, but I think they're lagging a little bit behind. This is data up to possibly the third week of August. And then pretty much like distribution of cases across, you know, across the board, really, definitely quite an increase, especially this past weeks in the in the younger generation, as well as in the in the older generation. So we're definitely paying close attention to to the distribution. We've had a few outbreaks in long-term care facilities. We're working really closely with with those folks to make sure that people are isolating, getting tested, etc. So next slide. Okay, what can we do to to slow the spread? You know, same message, but I will keep on repeating it. One, get vaccinated is the very important piece and the 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 main tool, let's say, in the toolbox to really protect you against this disease, especially against a severe iteration of the disease and hospitalization and possibly death. So get vaccinated is very important. Two, because, you know, getting vaccinated is not enough, adding a layer of protection is recommended now in both public indoor setting and public outdoor setting. So we need you to wear a mask and to wear your mask appropriately, meaning that it's above your nose and above your mouth. And this would really help not only protect yourself, but also protect the people around you. Then third, limit the social gatherings as much as possible. Consider, you know, canceling some events that you were hoping to go to. And if you if you can do that, please maintain physical distance with other people. And then the other very important thing is when you're sick, stay home. We have so much COVID transmission right now in the community that if you're coughing or you're having a sore throat, it's likely that you might be the COVID carrier. So these are the steps that would help us slow the spread of of this transmission at this time. Next slide, please. Okay, vaccinations, you know, we are seeing a little uptick, which is which is good. You know, this is good that that people are either changing their mind or, you know, finding the time or maybe making the time to go get vaccinated. We're hoping that because the Pfizer vaccine has been fully approved by the FDA, you know, that's gonna help people feel more comfortable in getting this this layer of protection. So, you know, the the mobile clinics are are still happening and and we're gonna keep them going, you know, as long as as we need to. Next slide, please. So, you know, we're at seventy-seven percent, we almost made a point, a percentage increase from last week. We're very close to the the threshold of eighty percent. And I, I mean, I I would want to keep going until we are ninety something plus percent, because the more people we have vaccinated, the better protected we will be. So we still have a little way to go, but, you know, we're well on track to get there and to even go over that that percentage. Next, like this. So these are the upcoming vaccine clinics. I just put the clinics for the next few weeks, just because we have so many and I didn't want to overwhelm folks. But as you can see, you know, we have plenty of events going on. We're really trying to work across the county and making sure we're going where people are at. We have an event at the Outlet Mall in Lincoln City on Saturday. We are today at Penta Creek. We have an event in Nashville on Sunday. The Charter School at Ediville contacted us yesterday and we're putting a clinic there on the seventh. We're going to be back to the Road Brewery on the eighth. And, you know, all the other events, we're gonna be in Yarhut on the thirteenth. So plenty of opportunity for people to get vaccinated. We have still the three vaccines available. So I would really encourage people who are twelve and older to get vaccinated. Now is it's a good time to do that. Next slide, please. You know, we received some questions from the media, so I thought I would kind of give you a sense of what's been what's been happening and the ramp up that we've had to to really put in place. So pre-surg, we had about two investigators, two clinic coordinators, and two outreach workers for the vaccine. Surge mode. We multiplied the number of investigators by four. We added some contact tracing. The Oregon Health Authority is also picking up some of that contact tracing for us. And we added a few people to help with the vaccinations clinic. Our communication needs have been really high, you know, to make sure that we keep the community praised of what's happening. And so you know, that and even with that, we're still behind. We're about like three days behind in terms of being able to be caught up with the amount of positive reports that we're getting. So really, if you're positive, please isolate. If you let your contact know that they have been exposed so that they can take the necessary protective measures. You know, I think there is a lot of people who seem to think that because they are vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine and they don't have to wear a mask. That is not a thing. If you're vaccinated, that is correct, that you do not have to quarantine. However, we're asking that you wear a mask because you could be transmitted transmitting the disease around you. So this is not fake news. You know, this is this is happening. And we really need everybody to to do their part at this at this point. So We really need everybody to, to do their part at this, at this point. So um. Next slide, and I think this is my question slide. Thank you.
Questions or comments from fellow commissioners?
Yeah, I, I have a question Florence. Um. I mean, you touched on this a little bit, but like, how are the vaccine clinics actually going? Like, what's a, what's a quote, good clinic? I mean, at this point in time, in terms of getting new people?
Yeah, a good clinic is uh between fifty and eighty people at this time. So uh, which is, which is really good compared, compared to the beginning of the summer where when we had ten people, we were overly excited. So uh, you know, we, we can see the, the uptake. It's not the le- level of what we had seen, of course, at the beginning of twenty twenty one when. When um people were really eager to get vaccinated, but, but still, those are, those are good numbers and um. Any new vaccinated is, is good, it's good news.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. And I guess my other question about vaccines is um. I think like several other parents, I sort of religiously check the CDC website to see if there is, or FDA website to see if there is. Any updates on when the vaccine for children under twelve um may be available and um. You know, no- nothing so far, just kind of that fall, early winter timeframe at this point. Um, but have you guys thought of how you might, you know, work on, on doing that population? Is kind of, kind of assuming the school district, because there seems to be an existing partnership, you know, might continue to work with us. I mean, i- is there thoughts or?
Yeah, we're definitely, this is funny you ask. We were actually doing some pre-planning this morning um with the team to really start looking at. Okay, um, how will we uh put this in place? I know that the Samaritan Health System. Has been working with their pediatricians also to um. See how that would um go about, because we were thinking about. Um, you know, we could possibly apply uh a similar model. Um, as the model we use for mass vaccination, but you know. For little children, that might be a little bit different. So there's still a, a lot of conversation to be had, but we are definitely. Um, starting the pre-planning and, and, and considerations of what will be needed to be him. Able to handle this population for sure.
Good, I'm, I'm glad to hear your thinking about it. I know, um, you know, I know everyone's overworked and, and doing a lot, and so this is, you know, kind of one more thing. Um, but what I, I don't wanna be is there's been such a long. Wait for this and kids will undoubtedly be in school when this is already happening and. I don't want us to be an additional um barrier, an additional timeline, you know, when, when it is approved for that use. Um, you know, I, I want us to have so- some, something, some type of plan in place or. Uh, the ability to do additional mobile clinics in that next week when it comes out so that um. We're ready to go and ready to serve people and that the county is not being, you know, an, an additional barrier for people to get.
Oh yeah, we will, we will not. I think we've been really trying to uh remove the barriers, if, if anything.
And I, and I know a lot of you are parents as well, and so I think there's um. You know, public motivation, you know, to serve the public, but I, I know all of you have personal motivation as well, a- as do I. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you Chair Hunt. Uh, wow, an awful lot is running through my mind. I have some observations. I have some. Questions for Florence. Uh, my first thought is I try to absorb all of this information. You know, I think people who know me know I've never tried to be uh. Alarmist in any way, but this just feels like a disaster. Uh, maybe a slow motion disaster and what's really staggering is that uh. We have these kind of numbers despite having seventy seven percent of our eligible population vaccinated. So. That undoubtedly, and Florence, please correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, has mitigated the damage. To a degree, I believe it was over the weekend. Uh, Douglas County, which is a very low vaccination county. Has something like two and a half percent of the state's population, yet accounted for forty percent of the COVID deaths. Terrible as this is, it could be worse, but it seems terrible enough. Uh, Florence, I wanna make sure I was making notes that I'm quoting you correctly. Uh, that you said, uh, at this time, we're still able to hold our own, but did they, you then say, but we might not much longer? Am I quoting you correctly there or?
Uh.
It goes when you were discussing hospital beds.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
You had just mentioned that North Lincoln didn't have any ICU bed staff.
Right, right. So you know, there, what, what happens, and, and I'm really not somebody who, who has hos- hospital management experience. But what happens that you have a variety of factors coming into being able to uh admit patients in, in the hospital. And one of them is availability of beds and the other one is uh availability of staff. Um, and the other thing that I was uh talking about was when you look at the trend that we've been seeing, which is really uh going upwards. Um, you know, s- we have been able to keep our COVID patients um in Lincoln County and I just wanna. Tell everybody that anybody who has been hospitalized in Lincoln County is a resident of Lincoln County, you know, I, I know that. Uh, there have been some rumors saying otherwise, not everybody is a resident of Lincoln County. Uh, but if we continue in seeing um hospitalization going up, then we won't have enough beds, you know, to uh, to, 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 to attend to those folks. So.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, let's see. Trying to, trying to read my hastily scribbled notes here.
Well, well, you try to find your, find your scribbled notes. Can I make a suggestion that maybe um? Not that you don't do an excellent job Florence, but for me as well, it's the number of, of beds that I get really nervous about. Um, can we maybe see if we could get Dr. Ogden maybe to come to our um presentation um next Wednesday and kind of talk about it? Because my, my understanding and having direct communication with her is, it's complicated. It's not just a number of beds, it's the staff to take care of them. And so when we say bed count, you know, my head thinks about a bed. It's not, it's the staff. And they have some factors involved in that right now. So I think maybe having her um come in and, and talk to us, I think that would be helpful.
I think this is a great idea.
I'll second that as well. And he- you know, here's another thing I wanted to ask you about. We have kept hearing now for several weeks that uh. The uh hospital census statewide was expected to peak and then start going down right about this time, but yet. You're telling us and showing us that that hasn't happened yet and uh. I'm sure, you know, it's way above all our pay grades, but people are going to be wondering, well, what, you know, what's gonna happen? What's? You know, how do we cope if this curve doesn't start back downward pretty quickly? So maybe that's more rhetorical question than anything else at this point and perhaps something we could address with Dr. Ogden next week if she's able to join us. Uh, I think that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I have a couple of um observations. Um. My understanding is, and, and I um, I asked for the specific numbers on beds. But I think Commissioner Jacobson's pointed out a factor that I was aware of, but I think is, is an important part of it. It's not just a question of how many beds and how many are occupied, but how many beds can be occupied, recognizing that. Um, as is the case apparently with North Lincoln Hospital, they don't have the, the staff to uh take care of the people if they're in a ICU bed. So. Um, again, I think that's a, a, a good additional piece of information. But I also think I read somewhere that the really critical ICU uh or COVID cases have uh been uh. Sent over to regional hospitals in the valley. Um, I don't know, well. I, I, that's my understanding. So that's, although we may have one or two beds available. Um, there have been some pretty serious cases that uh are being handled outside of our county that originated here. Um. So, uh, moving back to vaccinations, uh, when we started this pandemic, uh, I know from my own personal experience. Uh, uh, the, you know, the county set up a vaccination process. I had to go online, uh, registered to get a vaccination a couple of weeks or maybe longer. I forgot. And then registered to come back. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if I decided today, gee, I'd like to get vaccinated. Um. How hard would it be? Could I go into uh one of our um? The health clinics in uh Newport or Lincoln City? Could I go to a pharmacy? Could I go to? One of the um, not the emergency room, but other hospital facilities? Uh, how hard would it be to get a vaccination if I decided today I wanted to get it today?
Um, so if you wanted to get it today, uh, first I would suggest that you uh check um. If, if you have the opportunity to go on our website, I would encourage you to go check our website because you would find there. Um. A lot of information of where uh in the county you could find a vaccine. Um, then uh pharmacies, you know, uh, i- i- I, I don't know necessarily what their um. Um, systems are, some of them will allow for walk-in, others you might have to make an appointment. But all of this is, is well explained on, on the, on the website. Um, we, you can also, you know, if, if you cannot uh. Get to the website, you can give us a call uh at the Public Health Department and we, and we can help you uh navigate things. We have. Vaccines in the pharmacies, vaccines um at the health primary care offices. Vaccines in all the little mobile clinics I was um discussing earlier. So give us a call. We are at five four one, two six five, four one, one two. And um, and somebody will, will, will help you uh find um a vaccine near you.
So uh, again, generally, if I decided I wanted to get a vaccine today, it wouldn't be too hard to get it today or tomorrow or maybe, you know, in the next couple of days. Whereas uh, again, when I got uh my first vaccine shot, I think I registered um maybe close to a month in advance. So.
Yeah, we have plenty of vaccine available. Um, we're trying to remove as many difficulties as possible. Um, you can walk into the clinics. Um, and um, we have interpreters on site. And we're, we're really trying to, to make this vaccine as accessible as possible.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask a more difficult question. Um, earlier we had a conversation about the um, what I will refer to as bonuses for the hard work of our employees. Um, and there, uh, you know, clearly the scientific data says the best thing to slow the spread is to get a vaccination. Um. I think it's pretty clear evidence that incentives to people to get, uh, you know, just a simple incentive, money here, get your shot, really isn't very effective. Um, I think it's pretty clear that while mandates sound like uh it's a good solution. When you look a little deeper at it, uh, you know, the people certainly with the demand for employees uh. Probably are more willing to uh look for a job elsewhere, which creates certainly not only problems for the county, but a- any business that uh. Needs employees to be able to do its business. So um, recognizing that incentives uh don't seem to be uh highly effective. There's certainly some very downsides to mandating uh vaccinations and in my opinion, uh, really result in some questionable. Results. What are some things that you feel would um be more effective in getting people to get vaccinated? And I realize that's a difficult question. Um, but uh, you know, off the top of your head, what do you, what do you think uh? Could be done to increase the rate of vaccinations?
You know, um, I think at this time, um, we need to be able to listen to people, listen to their concerns. And, and, and try to have a, in, an open conversation as to what the concerns are and, and trying to also point people. Um, in the right direction in terms of where to find the latest facts and latest science. Uh, when it comes to um, to the vaccines. Um, you know, I think there has been so much going on. Um. In the news, in the social media, there is, um, I think people, you know, who might still be hesitating. Um. Might just need to be able to ask those questions and um. You know, so there are a few ideas. We could do some type of like forum where um, we could have a, a few experts. Uh, being available to people. Um. You know. I, I think that's, that's, that's the one thing right now that I um, that I can think of, because it seems like we've tried. So many different avenues, right? And, and I think, you know, we're, I mean, we're almost at eighty percent of our eligible population vaccinated. So. It shows that, you know, we've been able to reach out and, and actually I was uh looking at the data uh for. Um, you know, kind of like the race and ethnicity data, and we've been really uh showing an increase uh in, in vaccination rate for our um. You know, minority population, which is really amazing, right? Like, we wanna offer this vaccine in the most equitable way possible. Um. This is what I've got for you, Commissioner Hunt, uh, at this time. I think um, listening, educating. Um, and really providing people with the best information possible to help them make the, the decision, you know. Uh, and, and. I mean, I think also like what, what you decided to do with um, uh, the, the county employees, I, I thought was such a, a positive. Approach, like incentivize um the. Incentivize the behaviors that people have already, um, you know, um. Uh, taken, I guess.
Exhibited.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I thought was, was pretty, pretty great, like positive incentive. I thought was, was good. Yeah.
So let me follow up on that in a little different vein. Um, you know, let's say we get to eighty percent of the county. Um, residents being vaccinated. Um, I guess, let me clarify that. That's eighty percent of the eligible um residents. And, and that may be the answer to the question, but you know, wh- when do we reach herd immunity? And if we reach herd immunity. Will that? Result in a decline in the cases and the, the deaths to um. I, I, I'm not sure if reasonable is the right word, but will it result in a decline and in effect uh? Um, reduce the, the pandemic? Or eliminate it?
Yeah, so um, you know, and, and I apologize, like, it's, it's not necessarily, um, and, and I might not have the latest information. Um. Uh, for um, this particular um disease, but usually, you know, herd immunity is um. In the ninety five, ninety eight percent, right? Uh, to really uh start showing some. Um, not only decrease, but elimination of, of disease, right? So um, the more, the more people who we're gonna have vaccinated, the better able we're gonna be. Um, to protect folks against severe illness and hospitalization and death. And also um, because of that, we will have less transmission and circulation of the virus. And therefore, the virus is gonna be less able to adapt and find ways to um. Be what we call resistant uh to some aspect of the vaccine and then um. Uh, become an, an, a, a new variant and, and, and then uh, you know, uh, unfortunate. And then, you know, unfortunately, make us more vulnerable. So the, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult also because this particular disease is still novel, even though it's been with us for eighteen months or two years almost. We're, we're learning about it like on, on the daily still. And so the hope is the more people vaccinated, the less disease transmission, the less severe disease we're seeing, the less mortality, and then the less variation in, in the virus. I hope that answers your question.
I think it does. I'm not sure there is a fine, what should I say? I'm sure that the answer is not a simple one. So thank you. Any other questions or comments from our commissioners? Okay, Florence, thank you again. Keep up the good work. I appreciate your being here every week. And I know we're all dealing with difficult decisions and certainly trying to do the best we can. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Hall?
Nothing to report today, thanks.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, there is one thing I sort of forgot to say with the Echo Mountain Fire update that I just wanted to mention is I have been working with the state OCHS on some dollars they have received to start working on building wildfire survivor housing for people that will not be able to go back home. Maybe they were renters or maybe at a property that's sold. And so they are beginning discussions with us about potentially having, you know, building out a housing development here for survivors. Don't know the details yet. I don't think they even have property figured out or anything like that. But it's just exciting. So just wanted to mention that. Commissioner Hunt, did you freeze up on us? I think we may have lost Commissioner Hunt there for a second.
I think that's possible. So we'll just let people know that we're at the conclusion of our agenda. The next public meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Hall, we still have public comment.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you very much. Christie, we did receive some public comments. So if you could put them on the screen, and these were submitted via our smart sheet process. And we're, we'll get a look at those right now. And I believe all of them were related to the, today were related to the vaccine incentive that was before us for consideration today for county employees.
And then we just started last week our live public comment. And I don't know if we have anyone that signed up for that.
Right. Christie, do we have anybody signed up for live public comment?
I'm sorry, I'm back. My battery on my other laptop died.
Okay, welcome back. We were just asking Christie if we had anybody signed up for live public comment. We looked at the smart sheet comment.
No.
Okay.
So have we covered, there's, I don't believe any participants that are attendees that wish to comment. So I was going to comment under reports that just, I think, for, no, I just wanted to share the fact that certainly the county is now encouraging telework or remote work wherever possible. We've also initiated virtual meetings, gone back to virtual meetings instead of face-to-face meetings to eliminate, to reduce that social interaction. And again, have limited out-of-county travel on county business again in an effort to take some action that should help slow the spread of the virus. So I wanted to share that. So I guess we've taken care of public comment. Any other items the commissioners wish to bring before the board at this time? If not, the next meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners will be next Wednesday at ten o'clock. That will be Wednesday, September eighth. It will be held virtually. And until that time, we are adjourned. Thank you all.